I'd like to call to order the May 12th meeting of the Sebastian City Council, as well as the Board of Adjustment. We're going to stand for the invocation by Pastor David Daniel. I would ask that after he finishes his invocation, that we please take a moment of silence for the fallen police officers. This week is the memorial for fallen police officers this week, so I'd like to see if you'd take a moment of silence for that, please. And then, after that, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jones.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to share. I'd like to read from Psalms 23. It says, "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside the still waters; he restores my soul. He leads me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Your rod and your staff they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil, and my cup runs over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I would dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day, and thank you again for your love and your mercy. Thank you, Lord, for this great country in which we live. We thank you, Lord, for all of our elected officials here today. And, Lord, we pray that you would bless them and lead them in business today, Lord, and everybody here. We ask that you would give them wisdom and understanding and help us to build things the right way. Father, help us to encourage one another. And, Father, we just want to say thank you for our police officers and for our armed forces, and, Lord, for the sacrifice that they have made and that they have given. And so, Father, we say thank you for all who have--who stand on the line, and those who have fought, and those who have served, and we just bless this meeting in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. And everybody say, "Amen."
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to every republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hill, it's excused tonight. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
And Councilmember Nun.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, wait one second. I'm trying to hook these things to the T-call so I can hear what's going on. So, okay. Council, we have a request from the city manager and to add an item to consent--to the consent agenda, item 8H. It's a curry celebration, alcohol permit for the curry celebration, so by unanimous consent, I'll add that. Any problem?
No.
Okay. Brief proclamations and words. I have three proclamations to read. On the way down to the front.
Mr. Man. Mr. Man, were you talking about agenda modifications?
Yes, do you need--do you have any more?
We got a couple of gentlemen from the Veterans Council of Indian River County. They just want to talk about a short topic. If you could include that at the end of your--
Yes, actually, yeah, we can do that right after this.
Okay.
Is there any problem with that agenda modification, if anyone?
No.
No? Okay.
I'm going to try this thing again and see if it works. Does it?
Yes.
Sounding good.
Okay. This is a proclamation for the National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May the 15th. And I attended that celebration in bureau this week. It was kind of a moving experience. If you haven't had a chance to do that, maybe next year you can do it. But it's National Police Week, May the 9th through May the 15th, 2021. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May the 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week of May the 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas members of the City of Sebastian Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city, and whereas it is important that all citizens understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, which includes safeguarding life and property, protecting citizens against violence and disorder, and the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Sebastian Police Department increasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Ed Dodd, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby call upon all residents to observe the week of May 19th through the 15th, 2021, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observations, and further to observe May 15th, 2010, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. I believe that was 2021. Yeah, okay. In honor of law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in serving their communities and have been disabled in the performance of that duty. In witness thereof, I am herein to set my hand in cause of seal of the City of Sebastian to be presented on this 12th day of May, 2021. Let me present this. I'll let you take it. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. And before they go down, I just want to let everybody understand that with all the national talk about police departments, we are lucky to have one of the best in the country here. All right. This is Historic Preservation Month, and I think someone from the Daughters of American Revolution is going to come up and get this. Do we have someone here to do that? No? Okay, I'll read it anyway, and then we can go from there, okay? Whereas historic prevention gives the communities an opportunity to celebrate and learn about the diverse and unique heritage of our country, cities, and states. And whereas historic preservation is not only an effective tool in smart growth and sustainability practices, it enhances quality of life, increases local pride, community involvement, and a significant economic driver. And whereas the Brookside Historic Cemetery in Felsmere contains an interesting array of markers depicting changing times and economic periods. Professionally made markers, Rex assigned homemade cement markers that speak to the history of this small, historically-architecturally-centered community. And whereas Pelican Island Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution has been preserving the markers, identifying many of the areas founding families in the Brookside Historical Ceremony. Now, therefore, I, Ed Dodd, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May, 2021, as Historic Preservation Month, to increase public understanding of the importance of preserving our past to educate and complete our future generations. In witness thereof, I have set my hand in cause of the City of Sebastian to be affixed on this 12th day of May, 2021. Okay, not only is the DAR maintaining that cemetery, they're actually going through and actively identifying the veterans who are buried there, branch of service, ranks, and they're going through the whole process of trying to register that. They've worked in agreement with Reece Crop America to do wreath ceremonies there, so they're doing a really good job out there on that ceremony. Okay. That one's done. Now, Mental Health Awareness Month. Is there someone here representing that group, Mental Health Awareness Month? Okay. All right. Well, before I go up there and test my mental health, then we'll start this process. Whereas mental health of every citizen, family, business owner, and resident of Sebastian is a critical factor affecting emotional and economic stability. And whereas 44 million American adults are living with a mental health illness, and 13% of American youth are living with major depression. And whereas in 2020, COVID-19 depression, anxiety, and substance abuse doubled from the previous year, finding of one in five adults or two in five adults who are dealing with mental health issues. And whereas the stigma of seeking help remains primarily an obstacle. And whereas community leaders who must prepare for the increase in demand on services through education, outreach, even greater access to care to ensure our community's overall health. Now, therefore, I, Ed Dodd, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May, 2021, as Mental Health Awareness Month, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and provide identification and treatment of mental illness. In witness thereof, I am here and forth set my hand in cause of seal of the City of Sebastian to be affixed this 12th day of May, 2021. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, can you--yeah, leave that mic down, because there's a couple of members of the Veterans Council are going to come up. Would the two gentlemen who wanted to make a short announcement come up, our presentation come up, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Yes.
I'd like to call Jim Romantic. He's going to actually speak and show us a presentation, a short presentation about the veterans' parking signs that are going up everywhere.
Is this here in the library?
No.
Behind you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us on such short notice. My name is Jim Romantic. I'm the executive director for the Veterans Council, United States Air Force veteran. With me also is Curtis Holden, vice chairman of our board, U.S. Marine Army as well. And also in our audience, I saw another board of director on our board, Pastor, Father, Reverend Dave Newhart, United States Air Force. The reason for our coming here tonight is we have announced the launch of a Military Veteran Parking Initiative. It's a sign. We're asking that if you could show your support and appreciation to those who have served in the armed forces by reserving a parking spot or two in your parking lot for veterans. The Military Veteran Parking Initiative can be your way of saying thank you for your service to our military service members, past and present. It is a visual way of showing appreciation for veterans who live, work, shop, and visit Sebastian, Florida, and Indian River County. Here's how it works. It's got bullet points of how it works. It's a $250 donation. You'll get the 12-by-18 reflective aluminum sign with your logo as a proud partner along with ours, 10-foot galvanized pole, installation of the sign with a post, press release with a photo op announcing the sign installation, business listed on the Veterans Council website as an MVP sign partner. It is through community partnerships with people like you that allow us to successfully serve the veterans of Indian River County. The parking signs signify that we do not forget the sacrifices our military veterans have made and increase awareness for the services that the Veterans Council of Indian River County provides. We'd be grateful for you guys to have that opportunity for us to discuss the Military Veteran Parking Initiative. So, I have some handouts. I don't know if this will come up, but this is a--
Lay it on the table, right there.
Lay it on the table.
And then center it, and you'll get it. You have to drop it down. Yeah, right there.
So, that's a picture of how, what the sign would be like. City of Sebastian logo would go here, our logo is here, and that's the sign.
Okay.
Now, I know the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County has already adopted 10 signs. They did that. Five of our elected constitutional officers and offices, the property appraiser, the supervised election, the clerk of the court, and the DMV also has adopted to put signs out at their facilities as well. So, we'd be happy if you would also join in on that and put a sign or two here at your facility, maybe one here at City Hall, maybe one by the police department, but--
Get Mr. Carlisle's business card.
I'll give him the whole package.
And then he'll meet with you guys.
Okay.
And he has to--under this, we can't make any decisions.
I understand that.
Under this part of the agenda, so get that, and he'll make a--he'll put something together and bring it back to us. Is there any objection to Mr. Carlisle moving forward on this?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this open to businesses as well?
Yes.
So, this is open to all of our Sebastian businesses that might be watching that want to do this for their parking lots?
And they have a logo with the Veterans Council.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we're here, so that we know you're on TV, and they get to hear about it as well, so--
Awesome. No objection at all.
Yeah, so get with Mr. Carlisle, and he'll put something together and bring it back to us.
Thank you. And further down the road, we'd like to come and present just who we are. It's a new marketing branding thing we're doing. A lot of people know of us, but we want to make sure people and our veterans in our community know exactly what we can do for them and help them.
We want to talk about situations like upward American beltings, it's like a 9/11 to help people in emergencies. We got transportation to go to West Palm, and we got a veteran helping veterans, and a lot of other things.
Yeah, the West Palm transportation be important to a lot of veterans to know about that.
And we never shut down during COVID. That's one thing, too.
Good.
We've served over 89 veterans and over about $90,000 in direct aid.
Yeah, all right.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you, council members.
Mr. Carlisle, did you have something you wanted to--
Would you want me to mention now what I was working on with the Orlando VA? Or do you want to wait?
Yeah, still hadn't do that.
So, I've been in contact with the Orlando Veterans Association, and they--I'm going to be working with them to bring a vaccination site for veterans into the City of Sebastian. So, we're going to be working hand-in-hand with them. I have a meeting on the 25th with them to talk about that.
Great. If you get that information ready, I'll blast it out to all our members and our--
Once we get it-- Yeah, once we get it set up, we'll let you know. But we are working, currently working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Okay, under brief announcements, I have one thing. Actually, I have two. The Earth Day Celebration was a great success. I want to thank the members of the Natural Resources Board, the police department, the community development staff that were all out there, even though the tents were blowing off, blowing over and trying to pin them down. Our building department director was out there with a sniffer, making sure gas wasn't leaking at the trailers and so forth. And so, it was an all-out effort on the part of the, on the part of the city staff, and it was a great success, I think, for everybody that attended that. The Shrimp Fest, if you remember that festivity where they, you could go out and drink a lot of craft brew and eat a lot of good shrimp, had a celebration that I attended where they donated $28,700 from the Shrimp Fest to Sebastian River High School. And it was donated to various athletic programs at the high school. The wrestling team, the rowing team, girls' basketball, track and field, soccer, football, the cheerleading group, the boys' lacrosse, and then American Legion Post 189, which provided a grant for $1,500. They gave $3,400 to each of those athletic programs. It's a good indication of the kind of payback the city gets from these events that are held down there. Not only is it a good time for the residents, but it's also very profitable for a lot of our organizations that need the funds when they go with that. I didn't realize until I talked to some people that some of these athletic teams really don't get a whole lot of money from the school board. You know, they just don't get a lot of support, so they have to do an awful lot of this on their own, and it was a great deal that they provided that, so. Anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? No? Okay. Now, it's time for public input. Anyone from the public in the chambers that would like to address the council, please come forward, and it is on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Yes, ma'am?
How you all doing? I was here last council meeting, and I had asked if the city attorney would look into a matter, and he promised you that he would and that he would get in contact with me, and he has not. So, I just thought I'd bring the original emails that I had sent you all. It was a different council up there at the time. The customer was back in August, and it was in August I sent the email. So, Mayor Dodd and Mr. Hill should have gotten it. I also sent it to city manager and a copy to city attorney. So, from last meeting, he has not gotten back to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You got what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I met with the city manager. I'm not sure what I, as a city attorney, can do, but I did meet with the city manager on that issue.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to--
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I have--
Your name?
John.
I know who you are, but you got a--
Okay, Sebastian. One item of concern I have with the renovation over at Crabby Bill's parking lot, not so much as the fishermen are dedicated their area, which I noticed the sign is missing for some reason. We only have one handicap spot over there. Everyone else has to cross Indian River Drive. I'd like you to consider adding one more handicap spot there in the front. You got a walker, and you're trying to get across on a Saturday, Indian River Drive, it's kind of tough. So, give it some thought. I know we met state statutes, but did we meet Sebastian's?
Okay.
Okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda?
No one has raised their hand.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, council, we're on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items 8A through 8H.
I second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember McPartlin and a second by Councilmember Nun. These items, some of these items do have cash in them, so let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have no committee reports or appointments under public hearings. Mr. Nun, would you like, city attorney, would you like to read the ordinance on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. The first one is 10 Alpha. It's a second reading of a public hearing of ordinance 2103, Proposed Land Development Code Amendment in Regards to Mobile Food Establishments and Criteria for Temporary Uses. The ordinance reads, "In ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, amending Land Development Code Section 54-5-22.2, definition of terms by creating a definition for mobile food establishment, amending Land Development Code Section 54-2-3.2, 3.3, and 3.4 relating to the procedures and criteria for review of temporary uses and initiating Land Development Code Section 54-2-3.6, which-- procedures and criterias, and criterias for mobile food establishment, providing for severability and repeal law of conflict, providing for codification, providing for scrivenor error, and providing for ineffective date."
Thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing, not quadri judicial, but I'm, so--
That's the type of--
I'm going to, excuse me. No, I thought I heard somebody say that. No, okay. I'm going to open the hearing and ask for staff presentation, please.
Thank you, council. This is an ordinance in regards to a, I'm sorry, did Mr. Carlisle--
Ms. Carlisle, do you have something you wanted to say before the jury took over?
No. Ms. Bosworth is the subject matter expert on this one.
This is in regards to a, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlisle. This is in regards to a law that was enacted and signed off by the governor in last July that basically told the communities that we could not prohibit mobile food trucks in our municipality, but that we also could not have to have a registration, permit fees, or regulate these, that that would be up to the state. So, what you have before you is our proposed verbiage to be codified into our code book. What I'd like to explain is that with regards to the food trucks, there's a couple of different scenarios. If there is a food truck that is connected with a city-sponsored event and is going to be on public property, they will follow the rules and regulations of the Parks and Rec Leisure Services guidelines, the resolution that the city has enacted for that. If there is a food truck that is a part of, say, the Catholic Church when they do their flea markets, they've gotten a special event temporary use permit. They're on private property, and the food trucks as part of that event would be under their, that permit. All other food trucks, this is what this ordinance is going to cover. So, the food trucks that may be in a parking lot or may be at one of the breweries on the weekends, these are the guidelines for them. Again, they're not requiring a registration or a fee, but there's some of the basic health and safety kind of guidelines, and zoning districts and times that are allowed with that. And we've also, because this is a part of Article 3, we kind of cleaned up some of our temporary use verbiage regarding those special events and temporary uses on private property.
All right. Is anyone in the public like to address this issue? No? None here? Anyone on Zoom, Barbara? Yes, I do have a gentleman in the back, sir.
Good evening, council.
Your name, would you give your name, please?
Derek Gary.
Okay.
Mash Monkeys Brewing Company, 920 West Highway 1. I read through the entire agenda packet as well as this ordinance, and just want to let you know that me, as a local business owner, fully support it.
Okay, good.
We think it's a great thing, and see no problems anywhere with any of it.
All right, good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
I actually do operate and own a mobile food truck, so I'm encouraged by the action that you guys are actually taking here today. We've done some work with Mash Monkeys, and we do really appreciate that, so we're behind this 100%.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in public? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is no one with their hand raised.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number O-21-03.
Second.
All right. And so, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and then now the council, that we have a motion by Councilmember McPartlin, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Is there any deliberation on that by anyone? Anyone? All right, this ordinance, I think we can, no, we do, we have to do this by voice vote. Would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The second public hearing that we have is a second reading for public ordinance number O-2104. That's the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, that would be item 10B, as Impravot reads, "In ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 46, for floods, to Min Division 1 generally, to add Division 2, definition for accessory structure and market value, to delete Division 2, definition for manufactured home parks, to provide for accessory structures in flood hazard areas, specify elevations of manufactured homes in flood hazard areas, providing for applicability and severability, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for scrivenor error, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you, sir. Would the staff like to make a presentation, please?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is a, again, this is the second reading on March 18th. The council did the first reading. This, again, is an ordinance that was mandated to be revised by the Florida Emergency Management, and this will, if we weren't in compliance, if we had perils, then they would not, may not issue funding for that, and with our flood insurance rating. This also affects the RCRS. So, I'm going to let Mr. pass the time, answer any pertinent questions you may have.
Okay. All right, do you want to say something first, or do you want to--
No, Mr. Carlisle summed it up.
Is that mic on?
Mr. Carlisle summed it up. It's an ordinance, so mandated by, mandated by Florida Department of Emergency Management, and this ordinance is statewide, and it meets all the FEMA requirements. We did this about a year ago, but since then FEMA had some changes that they wanted made, so we had to adopt again.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this request? See none. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
All right, thank you. I don't see any reason for the staff to summation, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the council for their pleasure, please.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of ordinance number 0-21-04.
Second.
Okay, did you second that?
No, Mr. Partlin.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve ordinance 0-2104 by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember McPartlin, which you can do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, the third second reading we're doing is ordinance number O-2105. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council.
This is an ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending city of Sebastian Code of Ordinance Chapter twenty-six Building and Building Regulations, amending Article Two Building Code Section twenty-six dash thirty-one Technical Code adopted, amending Article Four Contractor Division One Generally Section twenty-six dash one-sixty-eight, renewal of certificate, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for scrivener's error, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you sir. Staff presentation please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, this is the second reading. The original first reading was on May, March eighteenth, and this is bringing us in compliance with the new Florida Building Code, the twenty-seventh edition, and requirements for us to update that. And under that, we have the opportunity to address, address some of our administrative issues. And again, Mr. Esseltine is here to answer any particulars.
Okay.
Yes, specifically what we're doing here is adopting Chapter One Model Administrative Code provided by the Building Officials Association of Florida. This is the only chapter in the Florida Building Code that we can modify locally. And the BOAF for consistency across the straight, across the state has provided a model ordinance that we can use to be consistent. And the second part of it is to allow the construction board to have a little more discretion about these licenses that have become inactive after three years because of, they just failed to renew. Happens a lot, and before the ordinance said that they had to re-exam, take another examination. And it just allows the board to have some discretion over that situation because many of these contractors have been in business for many years. There's really no point in them taking another exam.
Okay. I don't know who this question is for, but it's probably for one of you two guys. House Bill seven thirty-five that was passed this session preempts the licensing of contractors from, to the state, from municipalities and cities. Are we gonna have to come back later and fix that in this, or? It's preempting local occupational licensing, preempts licensing of occupations of the state, to the state prohibits local governments from imposing or modifying licensing requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And it was passed, and it's at the governor's desk right now, or I think he may have already signed this one. It's effective July one of two thousand twenty-one.
And Mayor, it may, it just may, because some of our construction licensings are done through the board, Construction Licensing Board and through class certification. So we're gonna have to see if he signs it, and then we may have to make some modifications.
Okay, alright.
Wayne, I'd sent that to you sometime, but I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
Well, we do have a resolution of, with a list of contractors that require licensing, so we'll probably have to revise that.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. Anyone from the public like to input on this? Anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the council's pleasure on this please.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-one dash zero-five.
Have a second?
Second.
Alright. Motion by Councilmember Nun, seconded by Councilmember McPartland. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, let's have a roll call please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna now recess the city council meeting and convene the Board of Adjustments meeting. First item of, on the agenda for the Board of Adjustment, approval of the minutes for April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Adjustment meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, both saying aye, motion passes. We now have a quasi judicial hearing. For those people in the room, it's a little bit more formal than a public hearing, and I'm gonna open that hearing now, and I'm gonna ask the attorney to read the title for the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first issue is eleven Bravo one subvariance extension request. This is about Simpler Marina Partners LTD in regard to an additional proposed water restaurant to be located at sixteen sixty Indian River Drive, open perin Squid Lips and Marina, closed perin, has requested an extension for a variance that was granted on May eighth, two thousand nineteen, to allow measurements of the proposed restaurant building height to begin from the finished floor elevation instead of the FEMA-based floor elevation, in which variance, in which variance was granted conditionally. That constructions of the restaurant building must begin within twenty-four months from date of approval. Construction has not begun, and the applicant is requesting a time extension.
Okay, council member, has anyone on the council had any extricate communications with anyone pertaining to this request?
No. No.
No, see none?
No.
Mr. Mayor, and also site visits.
Oh, has anyone, has anyone visited the site?
No.
Does it count if I just drove by it and I didn't get out of the car? I did drive by and look at it again, but I didn't get out of the car.
I did as well.
Okay. That was one of those pretty days on the river, and I knew if I got out, I would get back in for a while. Okay, would anyone who plans on addressing the council on this issue, please rise and let the city court swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representation which you are about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you please. Alright, let's have the applicant make a presentation on this, if need be.
Good evening Mayor Dodd, Council on Rockland, MBB Engineering. Here representing the applicant. Essentially, as you see here, basically it's an extension request. Maybe the first question to ask is why construction hasn't began in twenty-four months? It's been a rather lengthy permitting process, namely if you read into the next issue on the docket, as far as just the challenges we've been working for through this process and, but it has been diligent, we've made significant strides in the last six months, I would say, and council and staff can attest to that. So ultimately, the request is reasonably to withhold what council already previously approved, allow for the architecturals not to have to work through another iteration whereby stalling the product even greater, allowing us to move forward accordingly. So we confirm with staff's recommendation for approval, and I'm here for any questions or comments you may have.
Alright, thank you sir. Would the staff like to make a presentation please?
I'll throw it over to Ms. Bosworth, but the statements that he made were some of the ones that I was.
Yes, we included in your packet a copy of the order that was from that May two thousand nineteen, or the, yes, the May two thousand nineteen variance hearing. And there was four conditions. We did note that the first three have been addressed. There was some structural testing of the, of the slab, and it has been reviewed and accepted by our building official. What we have still on the site plan is for that slab to be a variance or the use, excuse me, a restaurant, so the use has not been changed or asked to be different. It really is the condition number four for the two years. We have been going through different revisions of the site plan that we are working on, the development order. We get a revision back, and another issue may come up with regards to piping a swale and being able to get some street parking, and that requires another revision and review. It's been recently that we did get the information that we needed to verify the correct benchmark, and these different revisions and the process, the time that it's taken has, we can validate that it has been the twenty-four months since that, since that last variance. And so staff, the applicant did ask for an extension, and we feel another hundred and eighty days would allow us to continue our review and get this site plan before the Planning and Zoning Commission to get their, either approval and conditions. So we request an extension of a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Does the, does the variance have to carry into the construction phase? Does it not? I mean, once, if you bring the site plan to planning and zoning for approval, and the variance time terminates, does that not cause a problem for the applicant?
I think the intent of, is we were hoping we'd get that, we'd get the site plan hopefully approved by planning and zoning, and then having that hundred and eighty days does kind of put that incentive on for the, for the applicant to get that building permit in, to get those, those fees paid, to get the, the structural reviewed, which we're at a point possibly, depending on the next hearing. Those could come in coincidentally so we can start reviewing the structural, and once the site plan is approved, then those permits can issue. But that was the incentive, if we get the site plan just approved, there's still no timeline on when those permits have to come in. The site plan's good for twelve months, and then you can request another twelve months extension. So we could have a scenario where the site plan would get approved, but a building permit wouldn't have to come in for another twenty-four months.
Okay, does that not mean though that we need to keep the variance in effect until that takes place? If it takes twelve to twenty-four months?
Yes.
So I wanna clarify, the way the, the variance that you're extending for a hundred and eighty days, construction must begin within twenty-four months according to one of the conditions. So we're gonna extend that construction must begin within a hundred and eighty days.
Well, which condition though?
So if you look at condition, if you look at the condition of the original variance, it's number four. Under the original variance. I'm sorry, it's a one ninety.
Okay, that's on one ninety of two, two sixty-seven, it's item number four at the bottom.
Yes.
The variance is valid for two years. The approval shall require twenty-four months from the date granted if construction to the building has not begun, till it expires twenty-four months from the date granted. So that's the same two years, if I read that right.
So we're extending this, the conditions of this, of this variance, we're extending it another hundred and eighty days.
So we're saying they have to, they have to have boards on the, on the deck for construction purposes within a hundred and eighty days?
That's correct. That's my interpretation.
I, I'm just trying to figure out whether maybe we should give them, and I don't know what the conversation is going on between the applicant and the staff, but if, I don't, I'd hate to have to bring this back to us, a hundred and eighty-five days from now because something's happened and they need to.
I would recommend, my recommendation is that we do. We need to have a sense of urgency.
Okay.
To get this project completed.
Okay.
And if they need another extension, that would be something you all can consider.
Okay, fine, alright. One other thing, Dory, in your, in your recommendation page on two oh three of two seventy-six, you've got a list of staff recommendations. Are these in addition to the four items that were on the original variance approval, or?
These, that's a new variance.
I think that's the next variance.
That's a, that's a variance request, Mayor.
I believe two, page two oh three would be for the next variance hearing.
That's not for this one?
No, starting one ninety-nine is the variance.
Okay, so I've gone too far in my book. Okay, sorry, I just went too far in my book.
Read me ahead.
Okay. Alright, now, anyone else have any questions for the applicant or the staff?
I have a question for the applicant. So you all had two years to get this project started, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And nothing was done. What assurance do we have that in the next hundred and eighty days that this project is gonna go forward?
Well, I think the main assurance is reasonably, and the ownership is here as well to attest to the many financial challenges we've been going through. Ultimately, as far as you matter, you're procuring financing multiple times. I think he's on his third financing process to this. But ultimately, I think the assurance is reasonably, we've committed so much time and effort and money into this process, essentially been permitting it off and on for around three to four years to the city. So all I can say is that we've made substantial gains in recent, as far as the push to get this done. And a hundred and eighty days is, to Mr. Dodd's assessment, is actually a tight window, but reasonably, all we can say is that the process is in full speed on our side.
Right, I'm just concerned that it's gonna come back before us. I just hope that we don't have to go through this again.
Well, we would, we would definitely support an extension of that, you know, beyond a hundred and eighty, but that doesn't hesitate us from my civil services side or my clients' financial concerns. Our intent is to make, is to hit the timeline, of course. But ultimately, we're also gonna understand that this process is gonna go through planning and zoning as well, approval, and building permit review, which you've been held up on through this process until we can actually put those boards on the deck as you described.
You know, having said all that though, I, I still like what it does for our city, the jobs that it could bring in, make the riverfront look beautiful, all of those types of things. I like that, but I just wanna know for the residents of this city about the assurances that we have, that this thing doesn't get delayed again for another two years.
Understand, yeah. We have no intention of delay, that's for sure.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that, that, that particular piece of property, we've had over the years many complaints about, and it's, it's beautiful now to see something being done to it.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to see that happen.
Yeah, you have, you have an individual who's committing substantial resources and time to.
Yes, I'm very happy to see something done with it. Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Alright, is anyone in the room or on Zoom? If you, if you wish on Zoom, raise your hand please, wanna speak in favor of this request. This is in favor of the request. See no one here? Barbara, does anyone raise their hand? No? Okay. Does anyone in the room or on Zoom wish to speak in opposition to this request? Fixing your hair, you're not raising your hand right. Barbara, anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. Since there was no public comment, the opportunity for the applicant and the, and the staff to refer back to anything that came out in public comment, probably is mute. Manny, which is?
If I can, just a point of clarification, is it, is it gonna be a hundred and eighty days from the May eighth date, or from granting it today? Just all I want to know for the purpose of the order.
Okay, would, would that have to be in the motion?
If it's gonna be a hundred and eighty days.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry, let me repeat what I just said, I apologize. My question was, just a point of clarification, didn't have my mic on. I just wanna make sure, is it gonna be a hundred and eighty days from granting it today, or a hundred and eighty days from May eighth, which was four days ago?
Okay, so what I would, would you, would it be best if we make that part of the motion for approval?
I think it'll be easier if it's just grant a hundred and eighty days from today granting it, and it gets an extra four days.
Alright, sounds good. Did you have something?
Nope.
Okay, okay. Council, as the Board of Adjustment, does anyone have any comments that they'd like to make on this? Or any deliberations they'd like to do?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to see this moving forward. I'm tired of looking at a, an empty deck out there in the river. I agree, it's a beautiful river. I like to drive down every morning and look out, and I'm glad to see something moving forward. So I would like to make a motion to approve the hundred and eighty day variance extension from today.
Second that.
Alright, any other conversations, anyone? No? Okay, let's have a roll call vote please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McPartland?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Chairman Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, now we're onto the second variance application. And I, I just wanna remind everybody that this variance is for the same piece of property. So it's a variance in height definition on that, and this is also quasi judicial. So we'll go through the same process. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to read the request?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. This is eleven Bravo subsection two, it's a variance application against Simpler Marina Partners LTD in regard to an additional proposed overwater restaurant to be located at sixteen sixty Indian River Drive, open perin Squid Lips and Marina, closed perin, at which structure is located within a flood hazard area and requires a building permit. Is requesting relief from a Florida Building Code Section sixteen twelve-point-four, whereby the minimum elevation requirement for a building located in a coastal high hazard flood zone is base flood elevation plus one foot to the lowest horizontal member of an existing structure that has been substantially improved. The bottom of the lowest horizontal member of the existing structure is seven-point-six feet, and the minimum requirement is eight feet.
Alright, anyone on the board have any extricate communication on this? None? Alright.
No site visit, no site visit.
No site visit?
No.
Alright. Anyone who intends to provide testimony to the Board of Adjustment, please rise and have the court swear you in?
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representation which you are about to give or present during this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation on this?
Once again, I'm Ryan, I'm clean with MBB Engineering, civil engineer for the project. So essentially, the variance application step forward for you. Obviously, you've mentioned before, you've seen this property for many years. You've seen this pad exist, essentially I believe was constructed in the early nineties. At the time of construction, FEMA flood zoning and building code requirements were a slightly different state. The main variance brought forth through today is that reasonably is that now, when, when developing in the velocity zone, or VE zones, they carry not only the traditional elevation, but plus an additional one foot of what they call free border distance between your lowest structural member and this set elevation. In this instance, the lowest structural member of the concrete slab, the twenty-four inch structural member, and basically it, the lowest component of that, is at elevation seven-point-six. This is all before in your agenda, just give me a quick update. So basically what's happening here is the, the documentation provided, and the supplemental criteria information, the substantial thirty pages presented from the structural engineering staff, all the way to some analysis done from our office, from some Florida information, study information, is basically stating that while, while, while there is an issue as far as where there's an encroachment into that one foot of free board, there's no structural concerns or effects ultimately to the slab as it exists, and we see no issue with this variance as performed. performed. So we support staff's recommendation here. If someone here answered any questions or comments you guys may have?
Alright, thank you, sir. The staff, would you like to make a presentation?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of challenges with this, and we do recommend approval, but we want you to take into everything into consideration, and I compliment Wayne in his working with this applicant to try to find a solution to this. Numerous phone calls with the state, with our community rating system people, because this could affect, we don't, have never done one, so we don't know what effect this may have on our community rating system, which is our insurance credits to, reductions to numerous residents within the city. Wayne has done some research, and I'll let him go into more detail, that it may or may not, but it's something to consider as we consider this variance, that if it, it has a potential, though be it small, that could affect our community rating system. And I'll let Wayne go into detail, because he's done a lot, a lot of work on this.
Because I just wanted to start with just explaining that the city participates in National Flood Insurance Programs, NFIP, and the Community Rating Service, the CRS. By participating in these programs, we can offer the citizens of the community to make them eligible for federally backed flood insurance, and be eligible for discounts up to 20% on that insurance. So the use of the variance procedure, although it's in our city code of ordinances under Chapter 46 floods, it's highly discouraged because of the effect it may have on the city's standing in NFIP and CRS. Issuance of variances viewed by these programs is not fully implementing our flood provisions in the codes, and it may be detrimental on the discounts on the flood insurance policies, and the variance before you tonight is the first flood variance in the history of Sebastian, so this is not something that we would, we would exercise our right to do this, but this, in addition to that, the city spends an enormous amount of time maintaining these discounts, and we wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize that process. So to the best of our ability, did explore all the avenues before the variance would even be considered, to ensure our place in NFIP and CRS. Because the uniqueness of this situation, staff has supported the idea of submitting for this variance. The structure is built, it's in the coastal high hazard flood zone VE, it was permitted in 1991, according to the records, it appears to have been in compliance with the flood elevations at the time. The proposed restaurant is a substantial improvement, and per the code, what that means is it's, it's the value of this improvement is more than 50% of the value of the existing structure without the land. So that means that the structure has to meet the current code requirements, which is base flood elevation, as Ryan explained, plus one foot of freeboard, that's the lowest horizontal structural member. So it's been determined that the lowest horizontal structural member of this structure is .4 feet too low to comply with the current code. So the structure was built out of concrete pilings, it's concrete beams and a slab, it would be infeasible to elevate or relocate the structures, which is what NFIP would recommend. So because the structure is located seaward of the high watermark, it's not eligible for federally backed flood insurance, and viewed by CRS is uninsurable. This provides a unique situation, because the flood elevation certificates that the city submits annually to CRS for recertification, we do not have to include anything that is uninsurable. So therefore, CRS shouldn't be too concerned with this variance, but we don't know that for sure, that they may have issues with freeboard and things like that, next time we have an audit, and it's a point system, we might lose a few points, but we probably make it up somewhere else. But this also means that the owner would have a hard time obtaining any kind of flood insurance, and if he did, it would be extraordinarily high.
Alright, I mean, I just want to make sure I do this hearing correctly, we go through the process the right way. Okay, does the board have any questions for either the staff or the applicant, or on the board? No? Okay, I, I just, Mr. Carlisle, what's the, and I know you can't pinpoint exactly, because you've got to wait for an audit, but what's, what's the downside to this potentially to us, to the city, and the other residents of the city?
So, as Wayne mentioned, we really don't have a good feel for what, what rating we could lose. Now, I'm not going to say that we're going to go from a five to a six, or from a six to a seven, but we may, in a category, we may lose scoreable points, which could raise it up, but we also could make an, have an opportunity in some other areas with a lot of work from staff to try to make up those two or three points. But since we've never done one, and we've not seen one done, we really don't know. I know Wayne has talked to the CRS people and the FEMA, as I mentioned earlier, and they didn't seem overly concerned, and they didn't really acknowledge whether we had, and you can clarify, whether we actually had to list this as a variance, because we don't, it's over the, it's beyond the high watermarks, so, and uninsurable.
Well, it, reading the emails that you include in the packet, it, I didn't hear any, I didn't read any sense of urgency on the part of the, of the flood insurance people on it.
The longest email you saw there was from Rebecca Quinn. She's considered by most as the authority on floodplain matters. She's a consultant to the state, and I just know through the years, she has been real instrumental in helping building officials across the state and others. So she had a pretty good feeling about it, it seemed like, that we had an avenue that we could pursue, where we wouldn't get ourselves in trouble.
Okay. Alright, anyone else on the board have any questions? Alright, is there anyone in the room or on Zoom, if you are on Zoom, raise your hand, please, that would like to speak in favor of this request? Any hands raised? No? Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition, opposition to this request? No hands raised? Okay, I can see them here, but, okay. And since no one from the public had any comments, there's not any reason for the staff or the applicant to summarize issues related by the public. If the staff has a summarization they'd like to make, it's an opportunity to do that now?
The summation would be that, well, all things considered, and the structure being on pilings and really cannot be relocated, nothing's impossible, but if it's on concrete piling and concrete beams, it would take an enormous effort to try to relocate or elevate that building. So that being said, and the engineer's certification of it, I mean, honestly, it's, it's in the freeboard, which is a one foot of extra assurance that, for flooding, and that the state has mandated us, and back in only about six years ago, I think it was when it first came into the code. So it's, it's still above base flood elevation, it's that freeboard that it's encroaching, and by .4 feet, so we're really talking about four and three-quarter inches. So I feel structurally that it's, that it's sound, and that we, as long as we're good with CRS and NFIP, I think, I think we're, we're in good shape.
Counsel, any deliberations, questions?
Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
See? Okay, I just want to make sure that in page 203 of 276, staff recommendation, we're also including, it's still staff recommendation, we have three conditions that we want included. Also, I would like to make sure that all staff reports and everything we discussed, including all the exhibits and the applicant's, application is made part of this record.
Yeah, so if you used anything today, provided to the court to make part of the record?
And, Mr. Mayor? If I may?
Yes.
If I may, if you make a motion, or you make it to approve, it needs to be 180 days from today to be, I'm not putting, I'm not trying to make the motion for you, but if you're going to do that, it needs to be consistent.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you. I would tell you, just, just before we get a motion, my biggest concern about this back from the first time we did it two years ago, was the integrity of that concrete slab, it's been up there for a long time and abandoned, and I have seen what happens to rebar over saltwater, and you're saying that the engineers looked at that, and they're comfortable with that, and you're comfortable with engineering court, so I don't have any issue at all with this, from the council's perspective on that. That has always been my concern, is that that slab might have a lot of metal problems underneath that concrete, but.
There's some repairs that are going to have to be made on the slab portion of it. I don't think it's extensive, I don't think it's beyond repair.
Okay.
But the precast slab, the piling was actually, in accordance with the first variance, they did remove a portion of the beam, got down to the piling, and I witnessed the test they did on that piling to make sure that it's still sound, and they, and they did do that, provided engineering analysis for that. So I feel like the structure is still adequate.
Alright, Counsel, I'm going to call for a motion, please remember the advice from the counsel, our counsel, and the advice from the City Attorney about the timeframe, and the recommendations from staff. I'll make my motion.
Mr. Mayor, we have approval of the variance being conjunction with the other 180 days from today.
Okay, and that includes item A, B, and C, variance recommendations, A, B, and C, from the city's report, staff report?
A, B, C, yes, that's four.
Okay.
I second that.
Alright. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
And Chairman Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Alright, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and reopen the council meeting. Thank you, guys. And we are now into new business, and let's turn this over to Mr. City Attorney and all these people sitting in the front rows and the reserved seats for the Charter Review Committee. This is item number 14A.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, this is the recommendation from our 2021 Charter Review Committee, they worked really hard. I know several of you have actually attended and seen it on Zoom. Right now, what we have before you are going to be eight recommendations, and I'm going to give it off to the Chair, who did an excellent job, and I think she divided up the work amongst all of them equally.
Thank you, Mr. Nun. Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor Dodd. I served as the Chair of this committee this year, and I just wanted to say a couple of things, and then we'll go ahead with the presentation. We did break up, we have eight recommendations that are coming to you tonight, and what we did is we asked committee members to volunteer and do two each, so you'll see a couple of committee members along with myself presenting. The committee met for approximately five months, and we held two public hearings. I will say, we received very little public input, that's been noted by several people that have talked to us, but there were plenty of opportunities at each one of our meetings, and then during the public hearings. But I will tell you that the committee itself is comprised of 15 members of our community, and they were all appointed by you all. I think that they certainly reflect great representation of our citizenry, and I know that everybody took their jobs very seriously. We, it was, we had some very interesting meetings, and we had a lot of input amongst committee members. So at this point, what I'd like to do is bring the first committee member up, and then she'll introduce the next one. So Sherri Matthews will be your first presenter.
Good evening, Counsel. Couple of things, I would like to also echo Chairman Beth Mitchell on her side, that we did have a great committee. There was a lot of, we were able to agree to disagree, and a lot of debate on a lot of these articles, and we did take our job seriously, as Councilmember Mr. McPartlin probably witnessed in a couple of his meetings that he attended, and we appreciate your attending that as well. Also appreciate the City Attorney and City Manager for your input in keeping us kind of straight on the histories and things that went on. As we start this, I'd like to start with, I'm just going to go through and go ahead and boo-boo like section, in the first article, Creations and Powers. Section 101 is a creation and power, there was no changes to that article. Section 102, extraterritorial powers, subsection one, subsection two, and subsection three had no changes or requested changes. Subsection four, public utilities, to furnish any and all local public services, including, and this verbiage was requested to add, is but not limited to communications, electricity, gas, water, lights, or transportation, and to charge and collect necessary fees or charges, therefore, to purchase, hire, construct, own, extend, maintain, operate, or lease any public utilities, electric light system, telephone and telegraph system, waterworks and plants, ice plants and works, gas plants and distribution systems, bus or transit systems, radio broadcasting stations, television stations, cablevision, rebroadcasting systems, telephone systems, or other public utility, to establish, impose, and enforce rates and charges for supplying such services or conveniences by the city to any person, persons, firm, or corporation, to furnish any and all local public services to persons, firms, industries, or municipal corporations residing or located outside of the city limits of said city, of the limits of said city, excuse me, to acquire in any lawful manner in the state of Florida such water, lands, and lands underwater as the city council may deem necessary for the purpose of providing an adequate water supply for said city and the piping and conducting of the same, to make reasonable rules and regulations for promoting the purity of its said water supply and protecting the same from pollution, and for this purpose to exercise full police powers over all lands comprised within the limits of the watershed tributary to any such supply, wherever such lands may be located in the state of Florida. And this is the proposed ballot question one. Subsections five, six, seven.
Can I bring something up before you go forward?
Sure.
Is it okay? I don't know what kind of rules you want to work under, but just for the public, anyone out there who is, some people might be cringing and panicking right now, there's only a five-word change to that section. All of the other stuff was in the section before. The only five words that have been changed in that section is to, is but not limited to communication. The but not limited to, I think, was already there, partially there, but the word communication was not there. So it adds communication facilities to that. So for all of the people out there who go back to public issues that are two years old, and start reading all the things about public utilities and all that stuff in here, don't panic, that's been in our charter forever. It's only the communication piece that's being added to that section.
That is correct.
Alright, I just want to make sure that I put, anyone out there in TV land who might be having a heart attack right now because they think we're going to get in the utility business? Okay?
Okay. And that's, that is proposed ballot question one. Subsection five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, there were no changes. Subsection 1.03, intergovernmental relations, no changes. Subsection 104, boundaries, no change. Subsection 105, existing businesses may continue after annexation, no change. Article two, city council, section 2.01, composition, no change. Proposed ballot question number two, 2.02 eligibility. And I will read this first, and then I will disclose the, go ahead, and I'll point out where the, where the changes were made. No person shall be eligible to hold the office of council member unless he or she is qualified elector in the city and actually continually resided in the city for a period of one year, immediately preceding the final date for qualification as a candidate for said office. That was the original article. What we are proposing for ballot question number two is the added verbiage, once elected or appointed, council member must maintain continuous physical residency and voter registration in the city of Sebastian throughout their term of office. Subsection 2.03, election, there was no change, and subsection, or section, excuse me, 2.04, term commencement, there was no change. 2.05, compensation, there was no change. And that is my two questions, and I'd also, before I leave here, as I would like to thank again Vice Mayor Jim Hill for my appointment to this committee, it was really, it was an experience. I'd like to introduce Patty Sullivan, she's going to read questions three and four.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Dodd, thank you for having us tonight to share these proposed ballot question changes. I'm going to start with subsection 2.06, mayor and vice mayor. We have no changes for A, one, and two. We have a proposed We have a proposed ballot question number three in section B, mayor duties general. And the only, we are only adding a certain amount there. And it is the section where it says declare a state of a local emergency. So the mayor shall have the power to declare a state of local emergency. And that's the only change in that section. Letter C, we have stricken where it says the term of vice mayor shall be for one year or until his or her successor is elected. And that's the area that's stricken there. No change in letter D, no change in letter E. And then no change continuing down into subsection 2.07. No changes there. And in section 2.08, there is a new proposed ballot question number four. And if you, in letter A, we are adding the word suspension. It's forfeiture slash suspension to that section. We're suggesting that, recommending that. Letter B, there are no changes. We have added a new letter C to recommend this change, where it, we describe the, define what it means for the suspension. That would say suspension from office, a council member or mayor may be suspended from his/her office if he/she is arrested for a felony or for misdemeanor related to the duties of office. And then we have made letter C into letter D there. Special hearing, the city council with the advice of the city attorney will hold a special hearing to consider the vote to remove or suspend a council member or mayor if in violation of sections B or C above. And then we have changed letter C to letter E. No changes in that first line. Number one, no changes. Number two, no changes in the first paragraph. But in the second paragraph, we have added a short sentence that begins right after citywide election. It includes, or until city council revokes the suspension or restores the council member or mayor to office in accordance with section three below. And then we continue on to the next page. Number three, we have added this entire paragraph that says, if the council member or mayor is acquitted or found not guilty or is otherwise cleared of the charges which were the basis of the arrest, indictment, or information by reason of which he/she was suspended under section B- D, then the city coun, I'm wondering why we added this? I'm trying to, okay. Then the city council shall forthwith revoke the suspension and restore the council member or mayor to office. However, any person who pleads guilty or no loc contendere, did I say that correctly? Or is found guilty shall be deemed to have been convicted, notwithstanding a suspension of sentence or a withholding of adjudication is considered to be guilty. That section, and then we struck letter D, and it was moved to section 4.02. And that would be my section, and thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've got questions five and six for you. Goes to section 2-12, procedure. Section A in meetings. City councils shall meet regularly at least once a month at such times and places as the city council may prescribe by resolution. Special meetings of the city council may be held on the call of the mayor or any council member, limited to one topic. And that's your change from prior charter. There shall be at least 24 hours' advance notice of any special council meeting called, and said meetings shall only be held after 5:00 PM. If a public emergency exists, any council member or charter officer may call a special meeting, and the advanced reasonable, you'll see highlighted, notices required, highlighted. Struck out was requirement, as well as the time restriction, shall be waived. All city council meetings shall be public meetings, except as otherwise permitted by law. That's question five. Page 14. Section 4.02, filing of candidate's oath fee. Per request from Leslie Swan's office, we have on section B, paragraph B, the oath set forth in subsection A shall be filed with the city clerk at least 81, struck as 60, days, but no more than 96, which was previously 75 days, prior to the day of the election, along with payment of a nonrefundable filing fee in an amount to be set forth by code. Notation is that the qualifying period will change from August 4th to August 19th. It's about three weeks, a three-week change earlier. Moved from section 2.08 in filling vacancies in candidacy. C is gonna replace D. And this follows section 4.02. Filling vacancies in candidacy in the event that following the close of the official qualifying period set out in Charter section 4.02B, the number of legally qualified candidates is fewer than the number of seats opened for election, the new city council shall fill the vacancy in office. Struck out is in the same manner described above in paragraph C of this section. Thank you, gentlemen. It was a pleasure to serve on this committee.
Thank you.
And I get to do the wrap-up. I have the last two questions. This would be proposed ballot question seven. I am on, sorry, section 4.12, election procedures. And it is subparagraph B. In the event that any election, that at any election there are two or more candidates for the same office, and they should receive the same number of votes, the outcome shall be in accordance with Florida law. We have stricken the rest of the language in that paragraph. Proposed ballot question number eight is in section 4.14, interim government. And we have added some language. Should a condition arise where there should not be a majority, three or more, of city councils serving either through death, resignation, and we've added the words removal or suspension from office, or otherwise in the interim until a special election can be called to fill such vacancies. The city clerk shall have the power to fill the vacancies until successors are elected, and such city councils though appointed shall call a special election as provided by this charter. That concludes our formal recommendations to the council. We request that you forward these recommendations to the voters by ballot. I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity that we've all had to serve. And I would like to especially thank your city staff, your city charter officers. Mr. Nunn, Mr. Carlisle, thank you both. And the biggest kudos go to the city clerk's office. They did the yeoman's job on this. As I mentioned, it wasn't easy to hurt 15 people from my perspective. But from Jeanette's perspective, I'm sure it was even more difficult. So we really appreciate all the effort that went into this. Thank you, and I'm looking forward to your deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. But before we move on, I, this, I've been on the charter review committee. Councilmember McPartlin's been on it, I think, twice maybe.
I was on the last one. I was on the one before.
You were on the last one, yes. You were the chair of the last one, I think, was it?
Yes.
It's not an easy task, because the tendency is to want to change a lot of stuff. And it's difficult to realize that the voters have a hard time when you change a lot of stuff. It's hard to get it through the voters. And I think, I watched many of the meetings. And I think that this group did a really great job. It was more difficult, the way you had to have the room set up, than being in a round table where you, you're having more, it feels like you're more open communication that way. The way the room was being set up because of COVID made, I think, made the communication a lot more difficult. So I think you did a really great job in that. So counsel, the second part of this, after the proposal, the presentation by the committee, is for us to review these and to direct the city attorney to do a draft ordinance for the first reading on May 26 of 2021. What's your calendar like on having this ready for the election cycle? Do you know?
I'll defer that to the city clerk, but I think we're on schedule.
Okay. Okay, the reason I'm asking this is that I'm not gonna be here for that May 26 meeting. And I was just wondering if maybe we could postpone that first reading to the next meeting? If that would, would that work with your calendar?
Does the city clerk have the calendar? I'm sure she could look at it really quickly. Is he about to work?
I'm worried about when you've got to have this prepared until Leslie Swan for her work.
We're actually a little early, so we do have some wiggle room.
Okay, all right. Okay. So anyone on the council have any questions about any of the eight items that they're recommending we move forward?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just one quick point clarification. I just want to remind counsel what the charter says. I'm gonna read it, what your direction at this point is. And I'm specifically referring to section 5.03, Charter Review Committee, and referring to the bottom of it, where it says, the city council may, by ordinance, which is what you will direct us to do, submit any or all of the recommended amendments to the electors for vote at the next general election held within the city at or, or at a special election called for this purpose. So again, just want to emphasize that your role here now is to consider, I'm gonna re-run out of it, any or all of these amendments before you. Thank you.
And it's my understanding from the conversation that we've had that we cannot add amendments, but we can view the eight items that they brought forward and ask for language changes to those. Is that a correct statement?
I'm sorry, say again?
We, of the eight items they brought forward, we can ask for language changes within those items. Is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, I can give you an example.
Yes.
Ballot question number four, on page 243. I was gonna question whether we might want to use the word criminal in front of misdemeanor. Because from a sunshine law violation perspective, there are true misdemeanor sunshine law violations that are not criminal. They're not going to court. They're not being charged. But someone complained, and the state's attorneys looked at it, and they pay their $50 fine or whatever in that regard. And I didn't know whether we wanted to try to trigger a suspension hearing based on a noncriminal misdemeanor change. That was just a question I was gonna raise. And I didn't know whether I could even raise that question.
If I can't, where is that section you're reading at?
That's on page 243 of our agenda packet.
Yes, sir.
And it's at the middle of the page, suspension from office. And it says, a council member or the mayor may be suspended from his or her office if he or she is arrested of a felony or a misdemeanor related to the duties. And I was wondering about the possibility of entering the word criminal misdemeanor, criminal in front of misdemeanor.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that any and all recommended amendments, that probably will fall within your purview. You're not asking to change a completely different amendment. This is something that they have recommended, plus it's been endorsed by staff. I don't, I heard what you said, and I still support the recommendation from the committee in support. But I think that some of you guys can, as long as it's within the changes that they're making. I think you guys can probably play with that a little bit. If you want to take it back before them, the other issue then is time. Do we have enough time to do that?
Right.
That's what I was gonna ask, was I understand that the attorney might agree, but can we make that change? Is that something we can do?
That was the question that I was asking you, basically.
So that, I don't know if I actually heard the answer. Can we say we, as a degree, if we all agree hypothetically that we wanted to make that change, what would be the process of that change?
Based on my reading of section 5.03, submit any or all of the recommended amendment changes. You are making a change to the recommendation? So I would probably eventually say that's something the council cannot do at this point in time. That's what I would recommend. I recommend that the proposals, the eight recommended proposals, as written before council, you either accept one, any, or all.
So then to me, that says we cannot make any changes?
That's my, that's my.
Am I understanding that correctly?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Based on, based on my reading of our charter, how it's written, by order, you can submit any or all of the recommended amendments. If that's not one of the recommended changes, it doesn't fall under that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. Just for clarity and understanding, there is a very key word in that sentence that says may be suspended. So if the council doesn't agree to suspend them based because it's not a criminal misdemeanor, they have that right to do so. So I think that probably covers the concern, I think.
All right, let me, let me make a procedural recommendation to the council. Let's take these one at a time, start with the proposed ballot amendment one, and either recommend it to go move forward or recommend it not to move forward. And at that time, we can have discussion about that individual one. So we're on page 239 of our agenda packet, which is proposed amendment one. That is to add the five words to public utility section that it's not limited to, and then communication, basically, it adds a communication utility as something that the city can do. Do I have a recommendation from the council?
I recommend we move forward, Mr. Mayor.
I second that.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know he's not, he's gonna work on it, but how's that gonna look on the ballot? They gonna put the whole paragraph, or they just gonna? Because that's a, that's a big section as opposed to a lot of the other ones.
And a lot of people might read that whole paragraph and just panic all over the place, not realizing. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, the ordinance will written, will be written 1.04 in its entirety.
Wow. Okay.
Okay.
That's a huge, huge ballot question.
Well, no, no, negative. I apologize. Yes, the ordinance, it will be only for 1.02. Where are we at now? One, two, three, four.
Four.
So we'll.
And you'll, the ordinance will be, the ordinance, you have a 75-word limit on that language?
Yes, we're kind of, we're kind of working ahead in case these things do get approved between the city clerk and I. So yes, we're working within it. I think Kathy has already started working on this, on these issues. So the answer is yes. Every, every, if you want all eight, for example, there would have to be eight different ordinance. It's just to address them, because they're all, they're all limited to a single subject, so.
And when you bring that ordinance back to us, we'll have an opportunity to address the content of the ballot language at that time if we choose to. Not to change the change that they want to make, they propose, but.
Yes, it would be the first reading, and then subsequently be another reading.
I personally would have a real problem with the public having to sit in the ballot box and read all of section four and try to think what they want to do with that. They would be very confusing to them, I think. So we'd have to deal with that. Okay, so we have a motion to move forward on item number one. Is.
And a second.
And a second, okay. Do I see any objection to that? By unanimous approval, then we'll accept proposed ballot change number one to move forward. We're on to proposed ballot change number two.
I'm good with change number two. Make a motion, move forward.
Yeah, I second that as well.
Yeah, any objections? Okay, by unanimous consent, we'll move forward with proposed ballot question number two. Okay, by unanimous consent, we'll move forward with proposed ballot question number two. And proposed ballot question number three.
I recommend we move forward with the changes.
Go with that, sec.
All right, so by unanimous consent, we move proposed ballot question number three forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
The manager and I were just talking, maybe I didn't make it clear enough. So let me just make sure I emphasize this stuff. What we're going to be doing is the ordinance will have these language. So for example, I think you're on page 239, that's the last one we did, which is Section 4. The ordinance will read completely like that for the ordinance purposes, but that's not what's going to go on the ballot, all of this. Only we're limited to those 75 words because that's going to go on the ballot subsequently. We're going to have to create that kind of language. But you will see all this in the ordinance.
Okay, will we see the ballot question, ballot language in the ordinance as well?
You will.
Okay, good. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, we're on proposed ballot number, question number four on page 243. And I believe that goes forward to page 244 on the agenda packet. So all of the items that are listed in yellow on our packet on 243 and 244 are in proposed ballot question four. Do we have any comments about that?
Do, I do.
I got a question about this one.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I heard where you wanted to add criminal misdemeanor, but I was just brought up misdemeanors or crimes just on their own. You know, it doesn't matter anything.
Okay.
But my question is, is when I read that sentence in Section 208(c), "The suspension from office." "The council member or the mayor may be suspended from his or her office if he or she is arrested for a felony or for a misdemeanor related to the duties of office." Is that only felonies related to the duty of office? Or is that all felonies? Because I think it should almost be felonies, is it semicolon, whatever the other ones? So you know it's felonies, and then it's misdemeanors related to public office. Because I could go murder somebody right now, be charged with a felony, and I'd be okay. But if I murdered the mayor, then that would be a problem.
Yeah, I would.
I mean, I'm just looking at, or is that legally takes it legally?
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I believe the question is the conjunction or. It's one, if he's arrested for felony or for a misdemeanor related to the duties of the office. So if there is an arrest for a felony, that meets the criteria. Or if there's a misdemeanor related to the duties of office, that meets the criteria.
Okay. So I, my understanding from that is if the, if Councilmember McPartland is charged with that murder, we can suspend him.
I don't have the government's staff.
And if he's charged with murdering me, I hope you'll suspend it.
I'm curious, has anybody counted the words in ballot question number four? Is it under 75?
He'll have to do on that, yeah.
What I'm seeing highlighted in levels has got to be pretty close, highlighted in yellow.
I think we found out one time before the issue that comes up if you have two ballot questions that address the same topic, because if one's approved and the other one's not approved, you've got a problem.
Right.
I believe we did that like two times ago or something like that. So you almost have to have all of the stuff related to suspension into a single ballot question to make sure it's all approved or not disapproved.
To answer councilmember Nun's question is, I know that the clerk is working diligently in getting these things down to that 75-word. And as soon as you guys let us know what you need, we'll get it done.
So that is the question I would have then. Looking at the highlighted words in yellow, if there's more than 75 words there and it's actually the change, how do you move forward? So you'll have to...
Have to be 75 words. We'll creatively...
That's interesting.
Okay, now, the ballot question has to be 75 words. They can summarize it on the ballot question. They don't have to have all the words that are listed here.
That's the answer.
The ballot question has to be that.
All right.
And the way that works on the ballot is there's a ballot question, and then below that is all the detail.
Summary.
The summary.
Okay, good. That answered my question. I move forward to approve that question number four then.
Second.
All right, no problems with that? Then by unanimous consent, we move proposed ballot question number four forward. We're on ballot question number five, which is on page 245 of 276. I just have one question, and this is only for my personal clarification. When it says limited to one topic, can somebody tell me what that means? It would be reasonable to think that if a special meeting might have two items or three items, and when we say one topic, are we saying Hurricane Irma? And there might be five things on the agenda about Hurricane Irma? So is that what we mean by one topic?
That's, that was our understanding.
Okay, I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure I was clear, if that's what, yeah.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Did we put point of order as a nonusable term? All right, any questions on ballot question number five? No, then by unanimous consent, we move ballot question number five forward to the ballot. We're to ballot question number six, which is on page 250 of your agenda packet. And if there's any questions about ballot question number six?
I have a question. I'm just wondering, and maybe the committee could fill us in if we're allowed to do this. What was the reasoning behind changing the election filing timing? Yeah.
That was just Leslie Swan asked for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Leslie Swan specifically asked for that.
I missed that meeting, so, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, I will ask this question, but we're talking about that if not enough people actually qualify, let's say this year we've got three openings, if not, if less than three people qualify, you're saying in the second part of that change that the council would fill the vacancies in the office. We have a procedure for doing that. So we would fill the vacancy in the office following that procedure. If it's less than six months, we appoint. If it's over six months, we can choose, I mean, we appoint until the next election. If it's less than six months, we can choose not to appoint until the next election. So we'll be following those same procedures, right?
That's in the charter.
Okay, it's in the charter. Okay, any other, any questions on that?
I'll just, should this maybe be two separate ballot questions? Because the one is for the supervisor of elections. And what if one, you know, if it went down, she's still asking for that change from the, you know, 60 to 96-day change?
Mr. Anon, please help.
Proposed ballot question number six is the single subject, so I'm not, I'm not sure if I understood.
Well, the first part of number six is the extension of the qualifying day period to 81 days and 96 days.
Actually, a question related to that is, is that section actually part of question four or question six? I mean, because it's been struck out of the section under question four and added in the question, in the section six. So does it actually fall under six or under four? I know we just discussed it.
I think it could be either one because you're asking to move it from four to six.
Four says you're going to move it to 4.02.
So then six...
And six is putting it in 4.02.
I don't think you want to have those on two separate ballot.
No, you don't.
You don't.
One or the other.
So I think we can leave that up to the attorney on which one he needs to put that under in his opinion. Is that reasonable, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, but based how we have it right now, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember McPartland, it all deals with candidacy. So under 4.02, filing of candidate O Ts, both A, B, and then U, C would be all that one subject.
Okay.
Reference to that one subject.
But I do understand Councilmember McPartland's question because if people turn down ballot question six, that means that we're not, we're not providing relief to Leslie Swan that she says that she needs to be able to process her ballots. Can we do that by administrative action? No, we can't because it's in the charter.
It is in the charter, and I'm going to have to defer that to the conversation that the city clerk had with the supervisor of election. But Section B was specifically something that supervisor of election brought to the clerk's attention that she needs that at time.
Okay, would it be reasonable to say to you that we're going to move forward both ballot questions and that if in your conversations you feel that, that section, move Section 2.8 to here can be made part of question four as opposed to question six, that you can do that on your own?
Whether you want to leave it here or back on 4.2. Okay, I'll consider that. I think it's good words that, but I'll consult with the other charter officers and the board, the chair of the committee.
Does that help you?
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts are if that doesn't get approved and has to stay where it is, it may be in the wrong section, but it doesn't really affect anything.
Well, what affects if people, if someone votes against amendment question four because of the filling of vacancies clause, they've now, they've now voted against the changing in the number of days that our supervisor of election is asking for.
Right, I agree. That's what I'm saying, if we move it to four, I don't know if it affects, I agree.
He can choose to try to do that. He can carry on a conversation with the city clerk, possibly with Leslie Swan, and make sure, and if he feels like comfortable, he can actually make that part of four because it's in both.
Right. But I think, well, he's also, he's the attorney. I think he should be having some of those conversations with Ms. Swan instead of having the intermediary.
Right.
You know, and I hate to put Jeanette in that position, and then she's got to relay the information that's...
Right, okay. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it. However, the section with Ms. Swan deals with Section B. I think the concern is Section C, whether it goes there or back on 4.02, is that correct?
Right, right. And if there is any opportunity that we jeopardize the approval of the request from the supervisor of elections, then I would recommend we put it back on four.
Roger.
Okay, all right. So then, by unanimous consent, we move proposed ballot question six forward?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, number seven is on page 252. That is, and interesting, this is, to change the tie to the Florida law, we actually had it in our charter, we run a special election, but Florida law calls it for a coin flip. And it felt that we need to follow Florida law, which is a coin flip as opposed to a special election. And it's also cheaper on the city to do that, but that's why that's there. So I wouldn't have any problems with that.
Nope. That's fine.
No, all right. So by unanimous consent, we move proposed ballot question seven forward to the election. Okay, and number eight.
I'm fine with that.
Recommend we move forward.
Recommend forward eight.
Okay, by unanimous consent, we move proposed ballot question number eight forward to the election. So we have, we have moved all eight ballot questions forward. And I move that we direct the city attorney to prepare ordinance to bring back to us. And if no one has any problems, I'd like to do that at the first meeting in June as opposed to May 26. Is that an issue?
First meeting in June.
Yeah, which will be the second Wednesday in June, or first, yeah, second Wednesday in June.
And that timing for the clerk is fine for the election?
That works fine with you? Okay, so my motion is that we direct the city attorney to draft ordinances for these eight modifications to the charter and bring it back to the council at the first meeting in June 2021.
I got it, thank you.
We all right with that? Thank you, guys, for all your work. Worked great, thank you. Okay, now we're on to supervisor of elections. This is on page 254 of your packet. This is approving the supervisor of elections agreement for the November 2nd, 2021 election.
Sorry. Move approval?
All right.
Second.
God, I thought you guys would, but you're running them, you know. I don't think this, we can do this on voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, sign, pass.
It involves money, Mr. Mayor.
It involves money.
It involves money, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it does, that's right. Of course, we have to pay for this. Let's have a voice vote, please, on this, Jeanette.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then, prior authorization for council travel to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. I move approval on this.
Second.
Any comments from anyone? Any comments from anyone in the audience about the council attending Florida League of Cities Conference? Anybody on Zoom want to comment on that?
No, sir.
Okay. And just so everybody out there understands, the public is going to have an opportunity to comment on each of these charter reviews or charter changes at our first meeting in June when the ordinances are brought forward. I didn't open it up for public comment tonight because really what we were doing is reacting to the charter review committee. It'll be open for public comment at the first meeting in June. So if anybody out there thinks they won't get to talk about that stuff, but it will be done then. Okay. We have a motion to second on item number 14B.
C.
C, yes. Let's have a voice vote on that, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To have you guys travel, the Wednesday is a council meeting. Would you want to travel after the council meeting? Or would you like to attend the symposium, which is going to be the 10th? Do you want to move the council meeting so that...
That's what I'm thinking. And I haven't actually looked at the packet on this conference yet on what the symposium is, but typically they're pretty, they're worth going to. So...
It's usually statewide concern.
Either that or have a short meeting on Wednesday, the travel. That's August, right?
It's August the...
12th or 14th.
The 14th.
Jeanette, doesn't that fall on the second reading of those ordinances if you're doing it the first meeting in June? No, that's the 12th. It starts the 12th.
That we would, yeah. So that's July the 14th.
Do you have, if you would like to go to the symposium, I think you should travel, you should move the council meeting to Tuesday so that you have enough time. But it's totally up to you guys.
Okay, does anyone have a problem with moving the council meeting to the 13th of July from the 14th?
Why aren't we talking August?
No, that's August. We're talking about August.
I mean, August, July, August. I'm looking at the wrong month. So it's the 11th, the 11th of August back to the 10th.
Correct.
Correct? Yeah, it's the 11th of August to the 10th. So moving the first council meeting August to the 10th, is that a problem for anyone?
To the Tuesday?
Tuesday the 10th?
Not a problem.
You do?
Nope.
No? Bob?
I don't know at this time, but I mean, it'll be fine. I'll put it in the calendar.
I'll figure it out.
All right, so then I'll move that we, that we change the date for the August 11th council meeting to August the 10th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So we've now moved it to the 10th. And I'll let you tell Jim. Now, we have a voice vote on the, on item number C, the authorization for travel.
A voice vote?
Yeah, a roll call on item number C.
I'm sorry. Okay, Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we're on to item number 14D. City staff.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, member of council. As you know, we've previously awarded Contract West Central Signs/ Shine Star to do our upgrading of all of our signs throughout the community in our parks and parking signs throughout the city. One of the things that we're looking to do is to replace two of the marquee signs in the city, one at Riverview Park and one at City Hall, to an electronic sign that we can change. I don't know if you had an opportunity or the public to look at the example that's out there. The bigger sign is not what we're asking for, being more modest with a smaller one foot by about six foot, six and a half foot. And we'd ask permission for council to award this signage. We think it's a better opportunity for us to, A, get information out to the public and to be able to change it at a moment's notice. I don't know how many of you can really read the one at Riverview Park. It's almost impossible if you're driving through. And we can cycle these signs and get emergency information at a moment's notice. It's just going to be a better, moderate way to get information out. We have representatives from the sign company, and Mr. Benton is here. I know him and Ms. Frazier's worked diligently on trying to get these things done. And we'll open it up to you all for questions or comments from staff or the contractor.
I went out and looked at it after, before the meeting. It looks great.
I looked at it before the meeting, I like it. I think the public will be able to view that. It'll be very simple to change electronically. I like it.
I thought it was fantastic, but I was talking to Brian earlier. I think the one in front of City Hall is a waste. in front of City Hall is a waste. I think it should be put on 512, and he said it had to be on our property, and I was thinking right down there by the flagpole, because that's a big, you know, people coming in down 512. I mean, I don't come down Main Street here that often unless I'm coming to a meeting or dropping something off at the post office, to be perfectly honest. And I don't think it would get enough traffic out there.
I mean, the, the location of the signs have been chosen. I've, I, I don't have an issue if council wants to change. I don't know what power availability is out on 512 or permitting with the county on 512, but it's, if council wants us to look into that, I could, I'd be more than happy to look into that.
I come down Main Street all the time. I like it.
My, my challenge would be to putting it on 512 is, down the road, if we move the compound out to the airport, and we decide to sell that property, we now don't have property for our sign. I mean, that's going to be down a ways.
I mean, I don't think we get a flagpole.
For today, I mean, that's not a problem.
Yeah. I think, I think if we put it on 512, we should put it down at the end, next to that "Welcome to the County" sign that's out there.
No. Uh, you know, I think the signs are a great idea, because there are a lot of people that don't know how to find out information, and I know we all think it's readily available, but a sign is, is so easy for people to find information. And if you can get out things in a moment, that's, that's awesome. So I move to approve the, uh, I.
Item D.
Item D. Thank you.
I'll second that with the fact that, you know, we can put the one here at City Hall and one at River View Park in a year, so if we have money, we can put one out on 512.
Love it.
Yeah. I, I think it's a separate item. If, if Councilmember McPartlin would like, I would have no issue with asking you to review the possibility of us putting a sign on 512.
Absolutely.
To review that.
Be more than happy to.
I wouldn't want to not put the one out here, and or, and, and just put one out there, but I think it might not be a, it might be a good idea to take a look and see if it's possible for us to put more informational signs out there. We own that flagpole, for example, in the, in the, in the triangle. That flagpole area in Triangle might be a great place for us to have something. Uh, it wouldn't distract from the flagpole presentation at all, but it would be something that could be seen by people traveling both directions on 512. So it might be possibly do something there.
Absolutely. I think it's a good idea.
So.
So I'd rather it there. I don't think the traffic you're going to get here on outside City Hall. I mean, that's just, I bet you, you do a traffic study, you're not going to see as many cars you see that go down 512.
Yeah. So, okay. So we're okay with that? With, now, this involves money, so, um, the motion, and second was to approve item D, as presented by the city staff. Anybody from the public want to question this? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Andrew Ring. Uh, I don't want to question it. I saw it on the way in, and I thought it was great. And to, um, but I would, not 512, please, because to me, that would be a traffic. If you're going to try to get information out on there, you know, people won't have time to read it. I'm sorry. But it was great, and I liked it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's have a voice vote. Uh, ma'am, sir, go ahead. I'm, I didn't, sorry if I called you ma'am. It's all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, the, the counter has John Christina, again. Uh, to counter those remarks, we're going to put the sign out on Route 1. That's the busiest road in the city, just about outside of 512. So we want people to see these signs.
We are putting one on Route 1.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. That's my point.
Yeah.
Uh, just one quick question. Are these going to be able to be remotely programmed?
Correct.
Oh, that's a good thing. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Ma'am?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to have to, uh, really encourage that we do have one at City Hall, because this is where we're represented. And, um, we want to draw people more in this direction. It'd be great to get, you know, people coming in this direction. So I like the idea of having it here.
Thank you. Right here first. I saw his hand first, then we'll go to the.
Bill Flynn, live on Main Street. And, and your, your, did you give your name? I'm sorry. Bill Flynn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Why not just have one at River View Park? There's plenty of traffic. I think everybody in Sebastian goes by that. It saves a taxpayer half the expense.
Dave Newhart. I appreciate what, um, Councilman McPartlin said about putting it on 512, but I am stopped at those lights at 512 and US 1 regularly, and I often view over there. So, uh, I'm not sure if you just get green lights all the time, or I can, McPartlin, I just zoom by, or whatever. Um, I agree. The city council should have, it should be right here at the city building, so people who go by can see it, you know, it doesn't go to distract. And when you're walking in the park, I'm sure you'll be able to see that, and others will be able to see it from 512 and US 1. So I agree with where it's going at for right now. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
All right. Let's have a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have any matters you'd like to discuss?
Uh, nothing for the council.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to bring everybody up to speed on the executive order, and why we now have all of our chairs in, in the City Hall. For those who do not know, the governor signed two executive orders and a statute that goes into effect July 1, basically nullifying our emergency order and any regulations pertaining to masks mandates within City Hall and municipalities. But to be clear, businesses still can require masks on their own. The city has no jurisdiction to recommend it, to influence them in any way, but if a business requests it, then it's up to them to, to, uh, to do it or not do it. We're not giving them influence either way. Just wanted clarification of why we've taken away this, the temperature scanners. Masks are now encouraged, but not mandated, and businesses can, can request them or not, and it's up to them and to their sole discretion.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Madam Court. Okay, Councilmember Jones?
Uh, yes. I'd just like to know, um, an item came up earlier. Is it possible for me to get consensus of the council to direct the city manager to move forward on something that was brought up earlier under public input or prior to?
Are you talking about the, the veterans' parking signs?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. I, I, did we, I, I thought we did that when they mentioned that.
Well, we gave him information, but we didn't direct him to actually go forward with that. Is that, I'm not sure.
I think we did. I think we did.
He could ask for consensus of the council move forward under his matters, could he not? Yeah.
Yes, but I, I thought that the direction was given to, uh, to the manager, but he could.
Is, is that the way you took it, Mr. City Manager, that we gave you direction at that point?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So I think, my understanding is, is I'm to get with the veterans on the program. This would fall within my purchasing ability and the fact that what happens around City Hall and the grounds falls under my purview of ma- maintaining and managing handicap spots or whatever. And, and I think it falls within my purview to do that. Uh, under our signed budget, I think it's something I can, I can work with. And I was going to recommend to, to them, after I spoke with them, to put out here by the handicap spots. And that was going to be what I, after I spoke with them, was, I was going to move forward with that.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, because we need those. Thank you so much for that.
And certainly, under your matters is a place in which you can ask the council if they have a consensus for us to request the city manager to move forward something and put it on the agenda.
Correct.
Yeah. Is that it for you, sir?
That's it.
All right. Mr. McPartlin?
Yes, I got a few things. Also, Mr. Romanek, you have his information. The Indian River, you know, Veterans Council, they want to come up and do a presentation. Because like they said, they have a lot of programs going on, and, and they feel that they're under, way underutilized here in the city of Sebastian. They have a great program, veterans helping veterans. They can go in if that person can't afford an air conditioning unit, a roof, any kind of construction on their house. They have this money, and like I mentioned before, they recently were awarded the Impact 100 grant, which was $100,000. And they have a lot of money to assist veterans. I also had mentioned that we might be able to, if there's veterans living down on Riverfront, in addition to the money we have from the septic to sewer, they might be able to grant some of that if they have a deteriorating septic system. So they want to be able to come up, so when you're talking to them, I don't know at the next meeting or the following meeting after that. And then, I wanted to bring up, the group that had come la- the other week for, about the lighting on Faith Terrace, you know, I drove by that residence, and it, it was pretty bright. I didn't walk out and walk around, and I, has there been any resolution, or have you met with them any further, or, because I, I seen they had some proposed ordinances from other cities, and I don't think the light should be able to shine all night long.
So the, the, the police department went out there, and when they went out late in the evening, the lights were off. And there are two other residences that they spoke to her about that have the exact same lights, and they weren't, those residents weren't concerned with those. Uh, so we haven't moved forward with any changes. We, you know, what I received from them that I remember was legislation, that is, on the state legislation that was going to protect quality of life and peaceful enjoyment, which would not affect this issue. So when I had met with her, I, she said there was ordinances, but I haven't seen those. In the, the, there was an ordinance that you all might want to consider as far as spillover lightage, and where you draw the line, because we have to be careful, because we have streetlights, and the streetlight is brighter than his lights. And what do we, if we do a spillover ordinance, how's that going to affect our street lighting program? So these, there's a lot of moving parts to that.
Well, eat, I, I'll tell you, these were bright from, and I was that 400, 500 yards away when I saw. I knew which way I was going. It was like the North Star, but multiple. So I was following that. So, well, that's good. And then the final thing I have is, is, you know, I, I think we need to bring back before council about the working waterfront and the lease on Krabby Bills. Uh, the tenant of Krabby Bills, I had a conversation with them. I had a conversation with Mr. Carlisle about what's happening down there. And it, there's a lot that's, uh, affected by this. You know, the city received over $2.5 million for that whole project down there. And if the person wants to leave or become empty, I mean, that building is almost 100 years old. If, if I had known it was in the condition that it was in, I never would have went, you know, tried to set up a business in there. The lease looked a little bit vague to me, but again, I'm not an attorney, and it says reasonable measures on each side. And I think there's a lot of history involved with this project over the course of years, and a lot of angst that it has caused throughout the community. And I think we need to bring back, and, you know, so all the council can be up to speed about all the things. And there are still some very important people, like Ruth Stansbridge, you know, the, the county historian. I mean, she has a lot of knowledge about how we were able to go about that. But I'd like to see that come back before council and discuss that. And again, I know, and, and down in Stewart, they have a similar thing, where they made a lot of improvements, because I mean, if the tenant were to leave, and I'm not saying they're leaving, the city would have to make huge improvements to that building, to keep it in compliance with the covenant that we have with the state, where we got that two, two and a half million dollars with. And of course, if we had to make some healthy improvements down there, I would see that we should look to get a little, a lot more rent, whatever fair market value is down on that property. But to understand that it's not just somebody who's getting cheap rent, but that's part of a whole package. And I'd like to see that brought up before council.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I've, I've had a conversation with the city manager that we, we are now finishing our final obligated modifications to that property based on the grant. So we'll be now into what I'll call the maintenance phase on the working waterfront, where we've finished building the working waterfront based on the grant. Now we have to maintain the working waterfront. And that's going to be, and have to be an annual budget item every year. And there's going to be substantial dollars in there, especially in our capital improvement fund, to maintain that building. It's, that building has a lot of problems. And I agree 100% that we, I think we should not only look at that lease with the Krabby Bills restaurant, but we might want to look at the parameters under which we have to start to maintain that property. Um, it might be a good opportunity to bring that whole thing back to us.
Because I don't think we ever did a full assessment on what that building needs. And I know it needs a lot, and I know the city has put a lot of money in there. And, you know, at what point does it end?
It, you want to say something?
Ms. Frazier, her budget this year, because I've walked that building, the front facade is about to fall off of it. So she's putting into her budget to do a study of what it's going to take to bring that building up to some type of standard. And we'll bring those numbers back to you, but I think you're going to be shocked.
Okay, now, that's, that's in her budget for 2221, or 2223?
It's probably going to be close to $70,000, $80,000 to do a complete study on that building.
Okay. Is there, would it be possible to bring that to the council, uh, in June, and see if the council's willing to do that out of budget, starting now?
Consensus, the council wants me to put together something and bring it to you?
Is that consensus, that we might ask him to put together something on that study process, and, and even if it means doing it off-budget this year?
No, I, I've been down there. I've walked, uh, property with Ms. Frazier and, uh, Mr. Carlisle, and I've looked at that. And I can tell you, based on what I've seen, that it's going to take some money to fix that place up. So I would like for them to bring something to us, because we have to do something. That's our building. So.
Because just to add is that the, the tenant has replaced two air conditioning units so far in the past year, at $6,000 a unit.
Yeah.
And a third has gone, which is going to be $15,000 to $17,000. Is that reasonable on their part that they're replacing these air coni-, you know, and, and also, I mean, another thing that came up was the walk-in freezers. I've been down there. I'm not a contractor. I'm an administrator. It's supposedly that the ceiling is falling in the walk-in freezer. I mean.
Well, I think, uh, it, do you, do you have an issue? I, I think there's a consensus that we maybe try to accelerate the timing on that study and, and bring it back to us in, in June, and see if we can accelerate it, even if it means trying to figure out a way to do it off-budget this year. Um, I know Ken's about to fall out of his chair back there when I say that, but, uh, you know, i- i- if we end up waiting until the next budget cycle, we're going to be next year, late December, January, before we start much of anything. So, um, it might be, it, I think it might be worth coming back and talking to us about that.
Absolutely.
Is that all right with you?
We definitely have some roof problems down there, so.
We need to, we need to know what the, what the total cost is going to be.
Correct. Yeah.
And what the feasibility is. Do we pour more money into that building? Do we?
Well, the question.
Put, you know, one of the things I talked to Lisa about is putting an envelope around the building that looks historic, because it may not be feasible to restore that, some of that building.
The question then goes back to the working waterfront grant. What are we allowed to do to that building of the working waterfront?
We'll have to research all of that out.
If we, under that grant, destroy that building, we're violating the grant. That puts us in a real issue.
We'll, we'll have to research all that. I can't, I can't address that at this point.
Right. So, okay. All right. So we're okay with that?
Yes.
Are you okay?
And you said to bring that back to you in June?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I'm not talking about the next meeting. Give the, give the poor lady an opportunity to put it together.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's just no way I'll be able to get enough information.
No, that's fine. That's fine. No. I mean, late June, second meeting in June, maybe? Would you think you'd get, the, the, I'm talking about just the dollars to do the study.
Yep. We should be able to get that for the first meeting in June.
Okay, because we can approve that study, and then you can go through the process of doing it. Okay, all right. Um, it's my turn. Uh, I want to parrot something that the city manager said. Um, what the governor signed, um, didn't change much of anything, except take away the authority of local governments to do anything. And so, once again, we find ourselves in a situation where if there are COVID outbreaks, those COVID outbreaks are going to be local. They're not going to be, we're not going to have a statewide outbreak of COVID. We're not going to have a national outbreak of COVID. We're going to have local outbreaks. The city of Sebastian's going to find out that their hospital is full. Some other city's going to find out. And in the state of Florida, municipal governments are now prohibited from responding to those local outbreaks. So I'm going to parrot what the city manager said about masks. If a business asks you to wear a mask, please be courteous enough to not force them to have to bring our police department in and try to trespass you out of that business. Wear a mask or don't go in there. Um, because I think it's imperative that you have that courtesy towards people. There are still a lot of people who are cognizant of the fact that we have an extremely low flu season this year, because people were wearing masks. And we may find next year during the flu season, lots of people wear masks just for the standard flu, not for COVID. So let's quit having the mask become a political statement and try to do with that. The second thing is, everything I'm reading and hearing tells me that people are no longer getting vaccinated. That, they keep saying we're at the top of our vaccination cycle. Everybody that wants one has got one. We may as well send all of our vaccine to South America. We're only at about 35% of the population being totally vaccinated. We need 70% of the population to be totally vaccinated to get the herd immunity. So please, if you're out there, there's nothing wrong with a vaccine. I had it, he had it, he had it, he had it, he had it, and we're still here. And I haven't lost my mind totally yet. So the vaccine doesn't really do all those things to you. It works. Please, get vaccinated, you know. Um, I know there are a lot of people that don't want any kind of vaccination, but the COVID vaccine is not what people say[1787.22] vaccine is not what people say it is. It's not, you know, I read one thing on Facebook, not last week, that said that some poor woman that was pregnant had a miscarriage just because she walked past somebody who had been vaccinated. That stuff is absolutely untrue, okay? Absolutely untrue. So, please, get vaccinated and try to see if we can bring this underlying. That's my time. And since Jim Hill's here, he doesn't get a time.
You skipped me.
I skipped you, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Well, first, I'd like to say to the, to the city manager, I hope we do more than two signs. I'd like to see some signs at some of our sporting fields, too. So, just think about that, about it. I would like to see signs maybe on waterfront down by Riverview Park, a sign or two down there. I don't know, just my thought. I'd like to see some more veterans. We have a lot of old veterans in this city and be nice to take care of them. Thank you to the Charter Review Board, amazing job. Tried to watch every meeting. Most, if I wasn't able to watch it live, I watched it on Memorex. Watched the recording later. So, but thank you for what you did. You did have some great discussions and sometimes I, I talk to people about it afterwards. Sometimes I let you guys just do your thing. Thank you for the citizens showing up tonight. We appreciate citizens coming and asking questions. We'd like to see more questions. When we spend a lot of money and do a lot of things, I know you trust us and that's wonderful, but keep us in check. That's, it's your job to keep us in check and our job to do what you want us to do. So, make sure you always know what you want us to do for you. As far as vaccines and masks, just remember a mandate never stopped a single person from wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. If you want to wear a mask, please, wear a mask. If you don't want to, then don't. Be respectful of other people. Be respectful of businesses that have mandates. If you want to get the vaccine, get the vaccine. If you don't, then, you know, you have to make a personal choice in your life to do what you need to do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, nothing else for the go to the order, we are adjourned.